It is 6:30, so I think we'll get started with the meeting. Thank you all for coming, and before we get started, I'm going to pass the gavel to our Vice President, Mr. Don Berwin.
Okay, so I call me in. Is this signed? Okay. So first we have the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's all stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank so many people for coming tonight. It's nice to see so many people in attendance here. Our first order is to get a motion on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Boob.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Tom to carry out the agenda. Do I have a motion? Or I should say, let's have a roll call, vote on the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I would like a motion on the minutes from last session.
I may add, Mr. Vice President, there's two minutes for two meetings. One was for February 25th, and one was for March 7th.
All right, can we make this motion for both of them on the same one?
And I would make that motion to accept those minutes for those two meetings.
All right, we have a motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Joe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, so we have action on the vouchers. Mr. Pierce?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers for $829,420.30.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Mike, and we have a second by Tom on the action on the vouchers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda is public participation, and we have four people signed up. I just want to remind people, we're limited to three minutes, and no names are to be used when talking in open session. So Harvey Smith is first signed up.
I have an observation and two questions. My observation, as I previously stated at the board meeting on February 25th, is that under Wisconsin state statutes, executive sessions should be rare. This is the seventh board meeting in 2019, and the board requests to go into executive session. And this follows the March 7th meeting, which has convened an executive session for over two hours. Either the MSD Board is unique to the state, or the board prefers to conduct its business out of the public eye. The current investigation should serve as a deterrent for conducting business in secret. Now to my question. My first question, since I do not know the contents of the report, might be better directed to Ms. Lewis, and contains two parts. The first part of the question is, for what account or accounts were these secret payments made?
This is just for public comment. We don't answer any questions. We just listen.
All right. Well, can I ask, was that something in the board report?
I'm not answering any questions for this whole person.
All right, all right. Do we take notes during public comment section?
The only things submitted is the motions, the agenda items and the motions.
All right. Well, I have a second question, which won't be answered either, but I'll ask it anyway. Given the many money discussions that have taken place in 2019, whether it be regarding fixing the pool, regarding possible renting of tennis courts, and so forth, my question is, why hasn't Mary Helen been present for these discussions? And will she be present at some point once the report is made available on Monday? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Harvey. Next person signed up is Cliff Hall.
I live at 4244 North Louisville Road, Janesville, Wisconsin. Under Wisconsin statutes 19.84.2, a person's allowed to talk about any subject during the meeting, not what's on the agenda. Wisconsin statute 19.83.2 allows the board to communicate back to the person. My main problem here is the stipends. I was on city council for years, and when it came to contracts, we dealt with them during contract times, not in the middle of things. We just don't hand out $10,000 here and there. I believe we don't have an open checkbook, and for the support staff and teachers, I believe they don't get this type of courtesy. I think board members and administration should bow their cap, because this is a strats beyond on the part of the city of Milton, the district. I can tell you one story. Tom Gillen's a friend of mine. I was on the city council. Todd Schnep is the city administrator. He wanted to give Tom a bonus, because he was doing such a good job. I was a good friend of mine. I said no. For one thing, it's going to set precedence, and it's going to open up the box. If you're not going to allow everybody to get it, no one should get it. And what happened on his board, he elected Jamie out of the box years ago. Now, my challenge is for you to put it back in. You need to set up policies and procedures, checks and checks, to make sure that money's just not being handed out. And I don't know how it's quoted, but that stuff needs to be changed, and they're going to keep it. Secondly, the fire department. I was on the fire department for years. You know, the fire department here in Milton's looking to build a new building, because their building's deteriorating, they don't have room for people to sleep, to stay overnight, the cover shifts. You know, these men and women are great people. They do a great job, they volunteer, they do the work on their own time. You know what a couple of them told me? That they don't want to go ahead and announce about the fire station and try and get money for it, because they're looking for the school board and the school district, for a referendum to pass for a new school. What we need to consider is the safety of our students. We don't have that right now in all the buildings.
All right, we need you to finish up with...
Okay. Secondly, we need to have quality education on this. And to do this, we need to change things on the board, policies, and with administration. $10,000, $500,000 is a lot of money. That's a third, or less than a third, than what people are making in this district. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. Next on the list is Chuck Jackson.
Well, to be quite honest, it's quite hard to follow comments like Mr. Hall just made. You know, my belief is always to keep the money in the classroom, and the money that we pay always not keep the money in the classroom. I'll just leave it at that. I wrote this in January, when we had a board meeting where we talked about a pool being a classroom. Unfortunately, I was not in town following February, and you guys canceled the meeting. So here is what I have from January 29, 2019. I do believe the district needs a new swimming pool, but some have declared the proposed pool a classroom. I think the proposed pool is so much more than a classroom. It's really a competitive athletic space. In July, the pool had a price of $6.4 million. Today, it's $7.8 million. I'm not sure why the price went up 22 percent. It might be very justifiable, but it hasn't been explained. $7.8 million out of a $60 million referendum is 13 percent of the total. What are we getting for our 13 percent of the total, our $7.8 million? Trying to understand this inflationary price, I asked the superintendent what the cost of each component was. His response was, he didn't know, he couldn't tell me. Apparently, this hasn't been worked out. He sent me an exceedingly weak map, which was a site plan. I went back and got a document that I had from a strategic planning committee meeting on July, which had a much more thorough explanation. Finding it difficult to believe that the superintendent couldn't tell me a thing about this swimming pool, I started asking board members. I asked four of them. Not one of them could provide any details on the swimming pool or insight, although one did tell me that they believed the pool was going from six lanes to eight. How can you approve this if you don't even know what you're approving or presenting to the public? And again, I'm not saying it's wrong. I do believe we need a pool. What's the cost of each component? We have a pool, locker rooms, mechanical room, and a viewing area. The biggest question is, how big is the viewing area? Is it 200 for general support, or is it 500 people for hosting major events? There's a significant cost difference between how many students or how many people we're going to let watch the people in the pool.
All right, Chuck, I would ask you to wrap it up, because we've spent three minutes, and we have a big agenda tonight. Thank you.
I think it's your responsibility to know and explain what is being proposed, so that the voter can inform and be knowledgeable when they head to the booth. And announcing that we need $7.8 million for a pool is inadequate. What are we getting for the pool? To me, it's untenable if the administration and the board is unable to answer these basic questions. And to the best of my knowledge, I haven't seen any of these answers as we've progressed from January to today. So you're asking us to support something that we don't know what we're supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lance Fennel.
Good evening, Board. My name is Lance Fennel, 2022 East Monroe Grove. I'm talking about number eight on the agenda, and I guess to the board, I would like to say that there should be more emphasis that a contract is a contract, and if changes to the contract happen, they should be done in front of the board. All of you people should have this in front of the board for discussion during meetings such as this. I believe with the other meetings that we went to, and listening to the attorney, I feel the board is kind of having a thumb being put on them with rules and fear tactics that you guys should act a certain way. Number one, you guys have lots of power. You're elected officials, and in this country, you are the basis of taxation with representation. There was a time before the Boston Tea Party that we were taxed with no representation. And with the U.S. Constitution in this country, you guys are very important, much more than this attorney's going to be telling you, because you represent and you hold accountable our tax dollars, and we don't have a choice when it comes out of our paychecks or out of property taxes. You hold in your hands the duty to the taxpayers to make sure our dollars are taken care of carefully, because everyone in this room works hard for the money we make. And so, I guess I would just have to say going in later tonight, think that you guys are very important, regardless if it's in Congress or whatever. You are looking, taking care of our dollars. It's a livelihood in this country. It's the basis of our country. We don't want a governing body to just take over without a say, and you guys, they have revoted you in, you are our say. And so, that's just what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. You're right on three minutes. You timed it perfectly. All right, next we have student council report.
I'll keep it brief. Last week, we didn't have a meeting due to reality check for juniors and seniors, but we've been working on the Neon Dance, which was a success last Friday.
All right. Anything from Anna over there? No, okay.
We're going to just check your calendars before I say this, but we are into spring sports. You know, hockey, those kinds of... No, we're into spring sports. Baseball, softball, track have started. I can tell you in this form that we're really missing the bowling alley right now, as we are hanging nets in the gymnastics area and moving balance beams and bars and trying to get space to work in. We've got about 60 baseball players, almost 40 softball players, about 120 kids in the track. So we're utilizing hallways for sprints. We're using the cafeterias, uppers and lowers, when we're not using for meetings and other things, for stretching. Setting up hurdles out in the hallways. It's been, we're very resourceful. And so, golf, soccer, tennis, all start in the upcoming weeks, and I'm sure there's more tennis court.
At Milton West, where we are focused on kids, we have lots of wonderful things happening with the students right now. The most fun, if you will, is watching the students who are practicing for their interpretive readings and the emotion that they're putting into it and practicing it over their nerves, where they're going to be actually talking in front of people in public speaking, and to watch them grow from those who have started doing interpretive reading in first grade to second, and now the third graders. And the growth that they make is just amazing and really warms your heart. So come on over to West if you want to see some great things with kids.
Speaking of kids, Marcia, what a great opportunity. So I thank you, Board, for giving us this time to celebrate kids, and I'm glad that there's lots of people here to be able to hear the good things that are happening at the building level, around Zero, or how you call it. In our 4K world, we're going to play a little dig you know game, but did you know that our enrollment in 4K is the highest it's ever been, which poses some challenges within our program? But I just wanted to hats off to my 4K staff, each and every day, problem solving to help students and families, you know, do great things in our community, but then also in our classrooms. Rolling on to Milton East, where at the same time, my amazing staff, each and every day, looking for opportunities for kids to be successful. So if you're not busy tomorrow night, 5:15, Milton East Gym, we have Family Bingo Night, which brings in almost 200 people. We have grandparents, parents, and my staff volunteering their time to create this opportunity. If you're not busy, come on down, and then you can catch the parents group meeting after. They're always looking for boss here.
And I'll carry on from the conversation about parent volunteers and give a huge shout out to our Harmony families. We had a really exciting week at Harmony, celebrating literacy and Dr. Seuss Week. You may have seen a lot of social media posts around the events that not only happened on our Family Fun Night, but also all week long. Our students listened to staff who posed as mystery readers, and they had to guess the name of the book, as well as which staff member was reading. We had teachers step up in multiple leadership roles and volunteer their Friday night, including Mrs. Cloddy, who's here, thank you, and just really had a great turnout. Again, a couple hundred people came out on a Friday night to celebrate reading and time with their families. So great, exciting things there. Also want to recognize that our Student Services team is working really hard with our special education staff and our classroom teachers. Harmony and Consolidated are the first schools that get to do the Wisconsin Forward Testing. And so, we are in testing season, starting next week, and the two smallest schools in the district will be the trailblazers for this year again, and so we're working hard on all the planning and coordinating that goes into testing season. Also want to recognize that this month is Music in Our Schools Month and Youth Art Month. And so, a shout out to our awesome music educators and our art educators. We have a lot of exciting things happen. I'd like to invite the community to stop by the Milton Public Library. Where Consolidated has an art show going on this month. And of course, at the Milton House, we'll be hanging all of the art, and that's getting close to opening, if it hasn't already, the Milton School District Art Show at the Milton House again. So check out our school newsletters and social media posts for more information, but I encourage you to get out and support the arts. In our music department, we have school programs, spring programs for our kindergarten and first graders this week at Consolidated and next week at Harmony. So just lots of things to celebrate, and I think what I love the most is the way our K-3 families embrace all of the things that we're doing with our students and work as partners with us. So, good stuff.
All right, from the high school. I'm always remiss when we do these reports, because there are a lot of things going on. I inevitably leave somebody out, but we have a list here today. One thing, Sarah mentioned that the testing season is well on its way. Since the last building reports, we did have the ACT. Just another reminder that every junior in the state takes the ACT. Miles was really excited about it this year. But Randy Barbles and Jen Williams lead the way in the high school, organizing that. It transforms the high school to a test-taking... That day is just focused about those juniors taking that single test, and that's what our report card is based on, and the students did a great job. Couple other things. This Thursday, the Large Group Festival, we have Mr. Pierce in the high school. He'll be hosting high school bands from across the conference in front of the judicators. So we'll have a series of bands all day playing in the auditorium, being judged. Since the last report, we have FFA Week. The kids did a great job with that. That includes the volleyball, or the Dodswell Tournament, and the, and I forgot to write down it, I believe it is the sixth or seventh annual Betty Purdue Badminton Tournament, which had several hundred kids participated in. We've had a lot of showfire success. The showfire went down at Avon, Indiana, and back, and did a great job. This last week, we had the Financial Literacy, or the Reality Check. So Tim Hoof, Cheryl Avery, Nick Minogue, and Amy Kenyon helped organize. Over 70 volunteers who were in the building who worked with all juniors and seniors in the Reality Check. I know there's a number of people in the audience here who have volunteered that day. That works, because we have so many volunteers, but it has been, I believe, eight or nine years that we've done that. It was a great success for all those students. This last week, we had Rural Lander's Day, Ms. Brodsky and Dr. Barbles, a group of students of UW Madison. And then also, today, actually next week too, the Discover Democracy. They'll be leaving for Washington, DC. And then finally, one big change you may have heard about, and I wanted the board to know about it, we'll have one more board meeting before it happens, but this week, tickets go on sale for prom. And so, we have something very new happening for prom this year. You may have heard, but we are going to be going offsite. So junior class is going to be hosting prom, while we have the coronation and the grand march here in the auditorium. We will then be all going to the Pontiac Convention Center for dinner, an all-class dinner, and prom all decked out at the Pontiac. We're very excited about those changes. That's the high school.
Just a couple of days from Northside, I wanted to highlight some teamwork opportunities in our building. Friday was a very busy day. We had our annual lumberjack day, where kids learned about Wisconsin history. Over 25 parents volunteered their time flipping flapjacks, serving sausages, the whole nine yards. It was a wonderful activity. A special shout out to Mr. Kleist's parents, who come into a demonstration about Wisconsin history. The kids really enjoyed that large group area. We also hosted our first rec night for sixth graders at Northside on Friday. It was a smashing success. Student council helped organize the event. We had over 80 percent of our students attend, and really proud to say the whole sixth grade team and specialists who they're supporting and volunteering their time for our students. Today and last week, we were able to collaborate with the Math Institute of Wisconsin, where we had a facilitator come in, at least professional development, with our math teachers in the area of fractions, to really deepen their understanding, so they can help our kids. Nice weather in our cap for the district. Paul Myra wants to partner with us to come in and learn more about what we're doing in the area of math, as they work to implement math expressions next year. Lastly, I wanted to publicly recognize Crosspoint Church. And your act at later on today, you guys, very generous donation for our school community. Really wanted to show our gratitude and appreciation for that place.
Thank you for the opportunity to say, from the Department of CNI, we've got a lot of things going on. It's kind of that weird time of year that we are in the midst of a school year, doing a lot of the current work, but also getting ready for next year's work. So we are busy planning summer PB opportunities with Apple, with some of our big conferences and training that we have going on, getting ready to plan classes and schedules for next year as well. So we have a lot of great things happening. Two things I'm really excited about, as we are getting into next year, and we're kind of laying the groundwork right now, we're going to be setting projects, we go away, and no Jeremy's down here talking about that before at the high school. It's an engineering pathway, and some engineering courses that we're going to offer a break here at the high school next year. We're super excited about that. And at the middle school, we are in the process of implementing ABBIC, which is a college readiness program. We will come before you in some future times to talk more specifically about those programs, because they're amazing, they can do incredible things for our instruction, and most importantly, it's going to be awesome opportunities for our students. And I love hearing everything that happens within our schools, because really that's what it comes down to, is teaching and instruction. We hear that open over again today, all the amazing things. In December, we had some amazing innovation summit with all of our staff here. We had the privilege of having George Perils come in and talk to us. Lots of our people are now following George on Twitter. I would invite you to follow him as well. He's got some amazing ideas. One of the things he says is, we need to make the positives so loud, so loud, that it makes the negatives almost impossible to hear. So I love the fact that we got to share all these positives about teaching and learning, and we have some great teachers here, and we're going to get recognized as well. So, thank you.
The Special Ed Department, district-wide, has been reading a book called Better Conversations by Jim Knight, and Belief Six is about how conversations can be life-giving. And so, we've been talking about how to use encouragement and praise, and be good listeners, so that we can hear and problem-solve with other really good solutions for kids who don't normally learn on that general track. One way that we're applying this is, we're trying to get as many students who have disabilities involved in their IEPs. And our initial goal is to have fifth grade on up do at least something in their IEP, whether it's introducing people or talking about their strengths. And we have numerous stories of kids in kindergarten who have a speech impediment only. Only, that's a big deal for them. But them being part of their IEPs and talking about their strengths and the great things that they do, and that is really inspiring for the parents.
I'd like to echo a big thank you for hearing what's going on in our buildings, and specifically in the technology department. First of all, comment on Ms. Stuckey. She said she gets to go first on state testing, so I appreciate her actually going first. My department does a lot of the support, and I'd like a quick shout out to my department, Chris Rappino specifically, who has taken on the role of helping out and getting the data ready, which is, if you know the state, it is a hall that's about 20 miles high, and she is climbing it with grace, and we will be ready next to her efforts. Personally, I've decided on a couple of things, working with Ms. Stu on a healthy lifestyle for our families, our students. My role in that is, my, our district technology team is working on a digital, healthy lifestyle plan. Our kids, we can, let's face it, that's real. Screen time, cell phone usage, all that is, we're looking for good ways to promote positive behaviors. Personally, I spent two days of my vacation time funding by me in DC last week, advocating for money for our state and for our school district. I'm proud to say that there's Representative Steele missing, and Representative, Commissioner Rosenworth still missing, and I believe that we're... And I believe that we're going to see a year-eight funding jump from a hundred and fifty dollars a student to two hundred and fifty dollars a student, which will go a long way to support our backbone and infrastructure. It's a first step, but it's a great step. The federal government is very supportive to that. Lastly, in the tech department, well, we believe in supporting people first, I'd invite you to come in and see some of our kids. You might say, hey, wait a minute, why are the kids in the tech department? But I believe every room in this building, and every room in the whole district is a learning opportunity. We have some amazing kids that literally just come by our office and just hang out and work, just because they want to be part of something positive. We have the ability to teach them soft skills, to have them do just basic stuff, work because they want to. And they're amazing kids. I'd love it if you could come by and meet some of these kids and check their out, because they work really hard. And they do it just because they want to be a person special like we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick informational updates for you in two areas. One, in which we don't really always necessarily talk a lot about, but we'll be talking a little bit later tonight on this capital improvement and maintenance budget. But the last couple of months, mother nature brought winter a little bit later than we anticipated. I just wanted to shout out to our building grounds for the amount of snow and the ice and the inclement weather conditions that we've had, the cold weather conditions, they've done an amazing job of keeping our buildings appropriately salted, getting the ice off so that our kids can get to and from school safely. And that our buildings are well-kept and well-maintained throughout what has been a pretty challenging time from a weather perspective. The other group that I'd like to recognize is our nutrition team. Last Wednesday, we hosted the district's first wellness committee. And thirty-two community member volunteers came to district office and they met and talked about how we can make our schools, how we can make our community an even healthier place. They agreed to focus their work on three primary areas. We like to call it food, fitness and fun. Food is primarily our nutrition choices, so that's the edict of the nutrition team folks and the men and women on that committee and that subcommittee of our wellness committee. The second area is what we would call more of the fitness areas. So, members from our athletic and activities office, EMREC, as well as community volunteers, looking at ways that we can promote activity and wellness in that area. And then third is the one that we call fun. And that deals with the social and emotional well-being of our children. We call it fun because we don't like to always necessarily call it mental health, because sometimes that has a stigma associated with it. So, instead, we focus about how we can maintain a healthy mental state for all of our children and our staff so that our learning environments are a safe place for them, not only physically from physical assault, but a safe place for them mentally. So, the next meeting is May 1st at seven o'clock here at district office. We'd encourage any board member interested in attending to do so, and there'll be more information available about it on our website later this week.
All right, it's supposed to be sixty degrees on Thursday, so I'm going to talk about summer, okay? So, summer school, online registration ends on Friday. We have hundreds of kids that are signed up, but to any families listening out there, I encourage you to get online. And again, online registration closes on Friday. So, excited about summer opportunities coming at us. At the middle school, it's about kids and kindness. And nothing exemplifies that more at the middle school than our middle school unity team. And I have some guests here who are going to talk about the Choose to Include campaign, which will be happening at the middle school next week. Ms. Emily Peterson has been instrumental in getting the unity team off the ground and running, so I am going to turn it over to her.
May I, the Milton Mill School Unity Team?
Thank you, Haley. The Milton Mill School Unity Team was founded in 2013 by myself and Dr. Tim Tiger. So, thank you, Dr. Tiger. Unity Team is the name for our Unified Champion School Program, which is a part of the Special Olympics. The program focuses on three components, whole-school engagement to leadership and unified activities. Our team is known to include over a hundred members, both students and staff. And our team works hard at MMS to promote unity, kindness, respect and inclusion of all individuals with and without disabilities.
We are here to tell you about our upcoming campaign.
Choose to Include Campaign, we are hosting to bring awareness of the importance of including and showing kindness to everyone regardless of their difference and disabilities. We are doing daily activities in inclusion and advisory leading up to our big campaign week, which will be March 18th through March 20th. The events of our campaign include a visit from the Mississippi Redwater Real Estate Basketball Team, Spirit Days focused on kindness and unity, and our Fledge Day. Choose to Include Fledge Day will be on Friday, March 22nd. Students and staff can sign our pledge at lunch, join our kindness chain, jam into music and a juror apple.
We are here to invite the school board in Milton to attend our pledge signing next Friday from 12:15 to 12:35 PM at the middle school. Taking a few minutes of your day to support our mission of spreading kindness and inclusion would mean a lot to us.
We have also brought a T-shirt for each of you as a thank you for your service and reminder that being a kind person is one of the most important things you can be. We hope that you wear these shirts proudly as elected members of our Milton family and that they remind you about the students you have the responsibility of serving every day.
Thank you for allowing us to join you all tonight and present. We hope our mission of kindness is recognized, appreciated and followed not only by the school board, but by our community as well. It is evident that the community of Milton could use a healthy dose of kindness and what better way to start than making the choice to include.
I want to thank all of you who gave your reports. I'm going to come out around here now because the next portion of the agenda is I have some legislative commendations that I want to give out to some of our teachers. Before I give those out, I want to say that I wish I could give all of the teachers of all of our schools commendations because I see what they do each and every day, and I'm so proud of the teachers that we have in Milton High School. But this group that I'm going to be recognizing are a special group to me. Some of them I taught with, some of them were my former students, and some of them are part of a program that I was a beginning of with the AP program back when we started back. I don't want to go back that far. So, first of all, I want to ask Nick Minogue to come up. In every high school in the state now, we have to have a financial literacy class. And so fortunate that we were able to pry Nick Minogue away from Janesville. I know when Mr. Billhorn told me that we were going to get Nick here, I was excited. Nick played basketball for me, I knew how hard he worked, and he always listened to me, never questioned anything I said. So, right away, I knew he'd be a great financial literacy teacher. And the first year I got elected to the assembly, Milton was honored by having Financial Literacy Council from the state of Wisconsin, a group that Governor Walker put together, come here and hold their financial literacy session here. And Nick was able to have a couple of his students present. You can't imagine how proud I was to have one of my former students present to the Financial Literacy Council of the state of Wisconsin. So, Nick, job well done. And here's a commendation that's signed by myself and Senator Ringhand. I'd like to get a picture of him. What do you picture? Maybe, should we do these all at the end here?
Yeah, we'll do them all.
Okay, let's do it. The next one, because I didn't want to do the biggest group first because then we get lost with the guy with the biggest heart, and that's Nate Pierce. So, Nate, could you come up here, please? Now, Nate came to us in 2011, right? Or was it 2010? 2010.
Nine.
Nine, okay. See, you've been here that long. All I can remember with Nate is that I was part of the show choir group that, I used to chaperone the show choir events. And Nate came and directed the band, and I saw the effort that this man put into everything that he did. And made his band, made our show choir band, made them extra special. And you knew that that was going to happen. And it didn't take me long to figure out that this guy was going to be special. But I want you to know, he was recognized as someone special. Let me read what we have here. It says Nate Pierce, Milton's district director of bands was selected by the School Band and Orchestra Magazine as Wisconsin's representative in its annual fifty directors who make a difference. Let's think about that. All the bands we have in the state, he's recognized as the number one man who makes the difference. How proud of that can we be? Mr. Pierce has been leading Milton's, if I should have noticed, band for the past ten years, working with the marching band, pep band and the show choir band. And whereas Mr. Pierce extends beyond the bandroom as many former students come back during breaks and during the summer to keep in touch with their mentor. And whereas Mr. Pierce uses music as a starting point to teach students lifelong lessons that go beyond the realm of music now. Therefore, myself, State Representative Don Bruink and State Senator Janice Ringhand do hereby congratulate Nate Pierce on this recognition and commend him for his dedication Next, I'm going to call up Mr. Billhorn to assist me in this. And what I'm going to do, you know, I think we have a whole lot of AP teachers over there. Can you guys all come up over here, please? I had to put them in class too, and now I got to put them in here. Could you give me one? I'm going to read this.
Yeah, mine, Don, no problem.
Mr. Churchill and I go way back, way back. He was my bat boy when I was playing semi-pro baseball, I want you to know that. So, I could tell some stories about him, but then he could tell stories about me, so we're not going to go there. Well, I wanted to recognize these people up here for, some of them, again, former students. I guess one I have over there, a former student. AP is Advanced Placement, which means they're teaching college-bound classes. Now, when I was a younger teacher, Mr. Kepner and our principal at the time came to me and said, I would like to start an AP program at Milton. I can't remember, it was 1988, 1989. Carol, you've been along for sixty years, when was that? Sometime in there. But anyway, I don't quite remember. But I remember him saying to I and Nancy Becker and there was someone else, the three of us, that, well, if you do this, we'll give you extra pay. Or if you don't get extra pay, we'll give you an extra prep. Well, guess what? We never got either one of those.
It's like, what's going on?
And I don't think you guys get that either, do you? But what I wanted to recognize them for is that they are recognized as one of the, they're on the national honor roll as one of three hundred and seventy-three high schools in the United States and Canada for the grades that our students have achieved. How awesome is that? And I can tell you the extra work that it takes to put in. Because I know when I was teaching, Mr. Newey, remember this, I used to have review sessions on Sunday nights. You probably didn't come in because you didn't want to. So that the kids would do well. But to be recognized, a lot of students who take the AP exams, that means parents don't have to pay for college credit. And I know, I can remember one of my students graduating with twenty-eight college credits. Now, because of the offerings that we give, they probably even get more now, I think. So, that's a whole year of college that these people are preparing your district students for, not getting extra pay, but saving parents' money for their student's college education. I don't think we understand or recognize that enough. And that's why I'm so proud to recognize that among this group here. Job well done, you guys.
Okay, because, oh, here's Mr. Bruink here. One thing I did want to mention about the AP staff too, about what the on-roll means is on top of just kids getting good scores, the AP staff has made an effort to increase the number of students who take Advanced Placement exams and also at the same time, increase scores as well. So, the idea is that expanding access to the Advanced Placement exam, it's not just trying to have, quote-unquote, "all the smart kids" take AP scores, but there's been a concerted effort by our staff to expand without having any prerequisites to get as many students as possible to try taking an AP score, exam or test or class, taking the test and then passing it as well too. So, what it means to be on that on-roll is not just the scores, but it's also expanding access to the number of students who have the opportunity. So, I wanted to add that as well. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Billhorn. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Red Hawk Recognition.
All right, this, we are going to recognize one of our students sitting down at the end of the table here for her outstanding academic achievement, Ms. Anna Quoddy, who is a Cole We'll go down and take a picture, but before we do that, Anna, where are you, are you going to school?
My head.
All right, again, let's congratulate Anna for the work she did. All right, next on the agenda, we have the referendum pool update.
All right, we have, we'll start with the twentieth. We will have the next community open house, and that will be at the middle school from six to seven. And so, we encourage community members to... And so we encourage community members to come and meet with staff and learn about the middle school, but also learn about all the buildings. Like we had a similar format, we'll be looking at revamping pieces of it, but there'll be an open house, it'll be at the middle school on Wednesday, March 20th, at 6:00 o'clock, 6:00 to 7:00. And then, second item, or the announcement, now we're going to talk with Mr. Schantz, talk about the pool.
Thank you very much. For tonight's pool update, we've just talked verbally the last couple times about the pool, so I thought I would share a picture of where we're at. Just a reminder, this past Monday, a week ago, was the day that we formally shut down the pool and began breaking it. The picture I have up right now is actually from that Monday, the morning we were going to start the whole process. I just want to share a picture too. This was actually Tuesday morning, we had the pool halfway done, and you can see a lot of the items had been removed from the walls. And this is how it sits this morning, completely dry, vacant of anything on the walls, and the pool's empty. Electrical's all bad, and again, this is in preparation for the next step of the pool, short-term pool fix, which would be as best as a payment of the pool wall tile. So it's good to get the process underway, and knock on wood, I shouldn't even say it, so far so good.
Right, before we go to the payment options, I just want to ask the board members what they've been doing. We all agreed that we were going to help promote the referendum, and so what opportunities have you had? Joe, you want to start?
Yeah, I would. Obviously, I think like several of us, I've had individual chances to visit with people in the community and explain as best I can, you know, what we're proposing, what's included, et cetera. Please engage us, please ask. Can't guarantee that we know, but we can find out. Or, in some cases, the decisions haven't been made, so that's why we don't know. But, and more specifically, I was down in the basement of district office and took all the big poster boards, if you will, that you folks have seen at our meetings here that outline the options, show the buildings and their footprints, et cetera. I took those to a meeting of the FFA alumni, it's a group that I belong to and have helped with a little bit, and gave them about a 15- or 20-minute "what's going on" type of a talk. And fielded a few questions and took an opportunity to encourage them to ask questions. Or maybe, and I guess I would encourage everybody in the audience too, if you hear people in town talking about the referendum, if you hear something that doesn't sound right, ask, or have them ask, or whatever. Because I think, obviously, my history of supporting the previous referendum, one of our challenges was some of the misinformation that's out there. And we certainly don't want that. And in cases where you hear things or whatever, or specifically for all of us, I've encouraged my colleagues too, if you hear something, help people understand that or correct it as best you can. You know, several months ago, when our strategic planning was going on, I heard someone say that we were proposing two swimming pools. You know, and I don't think that's ever been an agenda item or a goal of any of us. You know, we're going to fix the pool we've got, and if the referendum is successful, we're going to build a new pool. But never did we talk about two pools. So that person, I don't know where they heard it, I don't know how they found that, but something as simple as that could be easily straightened out, and we just don't want folks to misunderstand what we're proposing. So that's what I've been doing, sort of, as of late.
I've had the opportunity to field several questions from different community members and had some good discussions with several of them. And, yeah, it's been a good, positive experience.
I was at the first referendum community meeting here a couple weeks ago and was able to answer some questions there. It was the first referendum meeting I've been to in Milton, with the last two I did not attend them. So it was a new experience for me. Following up with that, I went to, our district team has a staff meeting with certain district administrators that are trying to head their group in terms of what to do next with the referendum and how can they be impactful at the next meeting on the 20th. So I participated in that and took their feedback, which I would like to share with the board. Because I asked them where we sit as a board, how do they feel that our impact is so far? And one of the things that was very surprising to me, I guess it shouldn't have been, but it really took me aback, was that staff and people in the district are afraid to openly support the referendum and ask positive questions in fear of being attacked both in the social media or by board members. And so us as a board, we need to be conscious of that, of how our behavior and how our attitudes is impacting our staff on the daily. So I took that back with them, and they also wanted me to ask our board in terms of supporting the referendum, to remember why we decided to run for school board and participate on this board, as it is all voluntary. And so that really resonated with me. So with that, I just wanted to say that I decided to run for the board because I knew Milton was at a crossroads, and I wanted to be part of putting us on the path to positivity, like we heard tonight, kindness within our board and within our community, and redefine what our relationship is. I think it has gotten completely off track, and together, we can do a lot more positive if we can respect each other and look to the future about why we do this. And at the end of the day, why we are here is for our kids and how we can best impact our staff. I will be at the next district meeting, which is tomorrow, I believe, the 12th? Yes, tomorrow. And I will be at the next meeting as well. And I was at the high school meeting with the staff last week about any of the questions that they had. And I will be at more schools doing that as well. If there's any groups that want to stay, I am more than willing to be there to speak with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Diamond. I attended the open house at Harmony as well and answered questions for people. In the last two weeks, I've been trying to be more visible in Milton rather than out in some of the other communities, even though today I spent all day on whitewater until tonight. But I did have the Boy Scout pancake feed, and I served coffee at, last Sunday, at St. Mary's Church and got to talk to a lot of people and answer their questions and their concerns. And it works best when I get out one-on-one, because I do correct a lot of misconceptions. I still think, I still had someone ask me, "Why are you building that new high school?" And after all the information that we've had, it's hard for me to fathom that, but it's someone who doesn't get a newspaper, and that's what they still believe. So it is good to just get out in the community, I'm going to continue to do that up until the referendum, to try to be here as much as I can, get out to the restaurants, to the banks, and talk.
I attended these and answered questions at the first open house at Harmony School. I'll echo what Don said, there's still a lot of misconceptions about the referendum out there. Last week, I met with the consolidated staff to answer any questions they may have concerning the referendum and what the referendum will do for them, I mean, their building. I attended and supported and answered questions at the reality check. If any of the board members or anyone from the community has never had the opportunity to go to the reality check, I would highly recommend that. Some very real-life scenarios are being played out, and it's amazing what an 18-year-old kid will do or how he will react when he bought a Cadillac and found out his girlfriend was pregnant with twins. Today, Mrs. Kramer and myself made a short video at Milton East about the referendum. And tomorrow morning, I will meet with the staff at Milton East to answer any questions that they may have considering the upcoming referendum. And I will too also attend the next open house on the 20th.
So far, I have talked to many people in the community, both in person, through email, phone, about the referendum, and just like everybody else has said, have kind of quashed a lot of the misinformation that is still floating around out there. I unfortunately was not able to attend the first open house regarding the referendum, but I will definitely be there on the 20th. I would recommend, you know, anybody in the community, anybody in the audience, to certainly get ahold of me, either phone, email, talk to me after a board meeting, track me down if I'm in town. I'm up at the schools quite a bit these days, to talk about the referendum. And one of the things I need to do is get ahold of Mr. Schwindl to sit down and pick a day to go meet with the staff over at West.
The biggest thing I've done is talking to people individually. And I know I always figure farmers are frugal, but Sue Johnson always says they're cheap. I always thought it was frugal, but it seems like one by one, if you can talk to them a lot of times, you can win them over. It takes a lot of time sometimes. But it seems like that's the best way, is to just meet people one-on-one and as you go through your life.
Tomorrow, we'll be working on what is the format for the 20th and how, if it could be presentations and so on. We are hoping, we're looking for some confirmation, but from the financial end, we're looking at a presentation about the bonding and how that works and how the borrowing looks. And, you know, like, for example, like a two-pronged borrow, what does that look like? And how does the district usage of that occur? And so we're looking at a short presentation on that as well. To educate people as to what does borrowing look like for large bonds like that. We weren't able to have that ready for tonight with the schedule, but we'll be looking at some type of borrowing piece coming up at that meeting as well.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the payment options for short-term pool repair. And I think Jerry, that's, you're going to handle that, right?
Correct. And just really quickly going back to the referendum piece, from the first open house that we had to the second, and even in addition to some of the questions that we heard during public comment tonight, we're continually updating the district's website and the referendum. It is on the main page, there's more information there. There was questions that came up about the bidding process that we were able to answer. Our community engagement meeting tomorrow, we're actually going to finalize the final flyer, the informational flyer. We'll send that to the board for a draft to make sure that includes all of the things that people are, that you folks are hearing in the community, that all of those questions are answered to the fullest extent they possibly tend to. And last but not least, a series of informational videos and/or other community engagement opportunities. I know one thing I talked about, you, with several of you, is the concept of a breakfast with the board. Not everybody can make a night shift kind of meeting, or a night meeting, so whether that be some of you, depending on your work schedules and your availability. Stay tuned, please see your emails over the next couple days to ask you about those engagement opportunities. The next component of this particular agenda is with respect to the funding component to the pool repairs. There's a detail, and at this point, only an informational memo that describes the, in January, you, as a board, approved $881,595 of unbudgeted expenditures to repair our failing pool. As a staff, we felt it very important to you to be aware of that in addition to what potential funding options are for that. The first one is operation, or is option A, and that is if a referendum were to be successful on April 2nd, the overwhelming majority of those dollars would be able to be applied to that referendum debt within only an estimated $110,000 of that for the remaker construction estimate dated January 11th of 2019, not applicable to that debt. Option B is if, for some reason, the April 2nd referendum were to not be successful, the board could authorize the use of unused funds that may be remaining in the 2018, 2019 budget, as well as to budget for the balance of those repairs in the 2019, 2020 budget. Stephen refers to this, and he'll talk a little bit about it when he presents his capital improvement and maintenance plan. This is a concept of straddling two fiscal years to minimize the fiscal impact in any one budget year. So that is an option that does exist. For those of you that remember last year that were on the board, we had about $275,000 of unused funds that came back to our budget. $200,000 of those dollars you put into the OPEP trust, $75,000 went back into fund balance. So there was a potential that there could be some unused money that we could apply for these expenditures that you approved back in January. And then option C, again, depending on where we end up with the 2018, 2019 budget, the board is permitted by state statute to borrow up to $1 million of non-voted debt to borrow within the district's revenue limit. And again, if that's something that presents itself later, as we know where we're going to end up in the 2018, 2019 budget, we'll present significantly more detail to you so you can make a well-informed decision if that's something you want to do or if you'd rather go to fund balance. I wanted to start this conversation with you now, so that when we present not only the 2019, 2020 budget, information about that, which staff is already working on to develop, but we start to wrap up the 2018, 2019 budget, that you're aware of these expenditures and that you know what their potential funding source and funding options are.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Next on the agenda is the Human Resources Committee report. Tom, are you going to do that, or Chris?
I'll do that. We met on March 1st, and we had three items on our agenda. The first one is discussion on the Benefits Advisory Group, and I'll have Chris give us the update on our third meeting that we've had with that group so far.
Thank you, Tom. The Benefits Advisory Group met on, at the time, September 4th. This is our third meeting. Our previous two meetings were on November 28th and January 9th with staff, and the discussion focused around the district's health insurance. Al from Associated Benefits and Risk Consulting, along with the HR committee, helped facilitate that health discussion. In our past meetings, we had reviewed staff experiences, strengths, weaknesses of our current health insurance plans, and school district health trends. Our district and many, many districts in the Rock County, the Dane County, as well as the Badger Conference. And we talked about consumerism and strategic planning. During our March 4th meeting, the conversations kind of focused around compliance and the law, along with costs, culture, and the ancillary benefits were also discussed. For example, unhealthy benefits that lead to higher healthcare costs and more claims. Investments in the wellness program will be a benefit to our staff's wellbeing. And as well as wellness and health clinics. And that would break down to e-visits, that the staff members work or go online, and also asking questions through the line chart. And they can use to get health insurance care without having to go to the actual doctor's office. And we also talked about onsite clinics that dealt with nurses and potential doctors that would be set aside strictly for the school district in Milton. The next steps that we are working on are to create a timeline, short and long term, and to discuss the differences, the different directions that are available to the district, and then communicate the board's decision to the staff.
One other thing that we also have talked about, and we've been talking about it for a couple years now, is the biometric testing part of the health insurance. So that's something that hopefully the board will be able to move forward in the very near future. Anything else, Diamond or Mike, on the first Benefits Advisory Group? The second item on our March 1st agenda was the discussion on the superintendent evaluation format. We've been working quite a while on this format. We've gathered several different options, different questions, numbering systems, comment systems. And with the help of the other two board members, we have put together a draft, and that draft is in your board packet. Diamond, would you like to talk a little bit about that draft format that we have come up with?
Yes, so we looked at it in kind of a two-front system. One being the part of the draft, or the review that goes out to the staff, the admin team staff and principals. Being that, instead of giving them the whole thing to do or a very limited scope, in the past, it was a very few questions that they answered in paragraph form. So we wanted to broaden that a little bit, because in order for us to accurately identify areas to improve or strengthen, we need to know what the staff thinks, because they interact with their superintendent the most. There's things that are asked in our review that we wouldn't be able to answer unless we had that everyday communication with our superintendent. So we created a version that would be utilized by the staff and that we would utilize in our overall assessment. And then we created a longer version for ourselves. With that, you answer questions, there is room for comments, and a grading scale. Why our approach is that way? If you just have a grading scale of 1 to 5, it doesn't give you room to give feedback or accolades to somebody for something that they're doing well or something that they need to be improved on. It's just a general number, and it's up for reference of what that means. So, but it is important to be able to look down the line and see, overall, you think someone has 5 or you think someone has a 1, it's very good for reference quickly. With that, if you score someone a 1 or 2, or someone a 5, you have to provide a comment. a comment to why you picked those scores. Once again, so it's based on merit of what the question is, not on personal interpretation. You actually have to give facts behind why you feel the way you feel about that agreement. So it's a little more in-depth, I think, than what's been utilized in the past, but it's to be able to provide a well-rounded assessment to our superintendent. Did I cover all of that?
Yeah, very well. Mike, any other comments on that?
No.
And tonight, this is the first look that most of the board members have received, so we will be taking no action on this tonight. At our next meeting, between now and then, board members, please take a look at it. If you have any tweakings, please let us know, and then at our next meeting, hopefully we can approve the format, and then we can set a timeline and when the evaluation will be sent out and when they need to be returned.
Would you guys, I look at this, I think we're missing the rating part. It's not on this draft, but it's explained in comments, but I think it's when Chris printed it from like numbers or pages, it formatted it weird, so when you're looking at it, it should have a scale, like a one to five scale to be able to select. So if you don't see that, that's probably why. So I'll work with, we can all work with Chris to get that fixed, too.
Board members who weren't on the committee, do you have any comments you want to make on the form? Joe, Brian?
No.
All right. Okay. And the, the third option, or the third item, which we actually did this evening before the main meeting, as we met with administrative staff, asked them what they liked about teaching and learning. Why, why are they here? Are they here for the benefits? Are they here for the money? The, the overall response was they're here because they like it here and they want to be here. One thing that did come out pretty loud and clear is the deteriorating environment of the district and the community. And that's, that's a very troubling spot, especially for administrators when they have to hire staff, and staff may not want to come here because of the environment, and sometimes the toxic environment that's happening within the school district and the community. So we're going to take their comments back to the HR committee. We're going to talk about them and see what we can do as a board and as a community that can change the environment, that we're asking these people to, to work hard every day to make sure our kids get the best possible learning opportunities that are possible without any interruptions from the, from the outside. So it was a very, very eye-opening meeting. I thank the administrators for giving up their time to come and talk to us. It really means a lot. So, Mr. Vice President, that's end my report.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, for your report. Next we have on the agenda, the Finance Committee report. Mike?
Yes, Steven Johnson is going to give us not to exceed $900,000 worth of projects a year.
Okay.
I added the not to exceed.
I said $900,010 earlier.
Yeah, I'm doing it now.
Thank you very much, Mike. Last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to present to the Finance Committee the recommendations for fiscal year 2019, '20's capital projects. And we have a brief PowerPoint presentation we can follow, walk through real quick. Just a reminder of the funding, typically the annual budget for the capital maintenance plan is $450,000. As Mike mentioned, this year is 900, this upcoming year will be $900,000. And just a reminder to why that increase is, that's due to the passing of the operation referendum back in the fall of 2016. And just a couple of other projects that have been approved in the last five years outside of the capital maintenance and improvement plan budget will include the security cameras and upgraded access control, the East Park and Traffic Flow Project, and in January, the board approved the short-term pool repairs. You typically years past, I hand you a shovel-ready project list, too, but the shovel-ready project list, you can find down there in the floor. This slide shows previous investments over the last five years. As you can see, over the last five years, the administration and board has sunk in a significant amount of money into its facilities, which has gone a long, long ways. This current fiscal year, we're at just over a million dollars worth of capital maintenance projects, and then we also were lucky enough to get DOJ grant round one and DOJ grant round two, which brought this year's total to just over $1.35 million worth of improvements. Also on the box on the bottom, because the exact determination of what fiscal year the pool-related projects are going to fall, we, you know, like Jerry mentioned earlier, how that, how that's going to straddle the July 1 fiscal year start, we left it as one lump sum there. And on to the proposed projects. In the Finance Committee meeting, I presented it by building, but I think it goes a long ways to present it by project type. This year for ADA compliance renovations, we're proposing to renovate both the upper and lower restrooms at the middle school. Currently at the middle school, there's zero ADA accessible restrooms. This would provide two sets of restrooms, one on each level, which was the goal of the district moving through all of its buildings. Also, we'd be renovating the main bathrooms here at the high school. They'd be the ones just down the hallway. The accessibility problem there is the entryway. For mechanical upgrades, we'd be replacing the air handling units at Surf Gym 1. These units are original to the building's construction in 1963. We'd be doing a significant roof replacement project. That's actually the roof that's right over our head right now. This addition was put on in 1994 and it's the original roof section. Typically for the type of roof that's over our heads, you get 15 years out of it. We're at 25. And we'd be continuing with our painting projects throughout the district. This winter break, we actually did the phase one of the Milton West hallway painting project. Here it's down in your head, it looks pretty darn good out there.
That's great.
Very excited to do phase two, which is the south half, which would include the lockers. Also, we'd be doing the front office at the middle school, library at the middle school, and the entire exterior of Northside, which is again, original to the building's construction in 1993, and we'd also be doing some of this latest top point. And that's due to the, the last year of paint over the stucco starting to bubble off, so we got to address that sooner rather than later. And also flooring replacements, to be the remainder of the 1999 addition at the high school. Art and science business is the main areas that that would affect. That flooring is in much similar condition to what the cafeteria was last year. You can actually physically walk into classrooms and pick up floor tiles. Front office at the middle school, LMC at the middle school, and three classrooms at West that are original to the building's construction in 1957, and unfortunately, that was built in a time where it was asbestos containing, and we have more about evading that floor tile. That is actually the conclusion of the proposed projects for 2019, '20. Those are your, you know, budgetary location totals adding up to a total budget for 1920 of $900,000. So that wraps up the project expenses?
Yes. Thank you, Steve. I believe you leave approval tonight, right, to get going on the projects?
Yes, I do, and I guess I can go to the second part of that, too, before the approval, and that's the...
Yeah, go ahead.
And along with this, we always bring a recommendation to the board to replace a vehicle, one of the district's vehicles, or soda cleaning equipment, or outdoor power equipment, some, some, you know, high expenditures that we typically put a bunch of more. So this year, our recommendation is to replace our 2006 express van, which is primarily used at Mecca's now. That van would be traded in. We'd take one of our oldest Suburbans and put that Suburban to use at Mecca's, and we'd actually, on your hat, so I'd be recommending a 10-passenger Ford Transit van to be a new vehicle for athletics and activities to check out, so.
Can I ask, do all the board members get to drive it first to see if we like it?
You, absolutely.
Dad, I would recommend not doing that unless you've had bus driving experience because it's kind of like driving a short bus.
All right. So we need a motion to, Karen, do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, or I would move to approve the five-year capital maintenance and improvement plan and vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, specifically as the items and projects outlined in Steven's 2019, 2020 fiscal report as provided.
All right. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right. I think Karen beat you, Tom, so Karen will get the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steven. Next we have a presentation of potential tennis court options. Jerry, you going to provide that for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the March 5 Finance Committee meeting, we had the opportunity to listen to three different options for our tennis courts. In particular, there was one option that was presented from a relationship, kind of expanding a relationship that we currently have with Community Fitness and Tennis Center. Another option with soon-to-be-formed Midwest Tennis Center. And then there is the option of replacing or repairing our Central Park tennis courts that we have right now. You noted that it is not in Steven's 2019, 2020 capital improvement budget to replayer or replace the tennis courts at Central Park. And we had the situation with the pool come up, we suspended those conversations, communicated that suspension of those conversations. It doesn't mean that that had to be necessarily forever, but that was a temporary nature so that we could channel our energies toward repairing the pool. The tennis courts are, Steven, you correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they're 32 years old?
That's correct.
32 years of age. They have lived a very good life. We have, we're operating under a 1987 memorandum of understanding with the city of Milton, whereby the school district uses those courts, and the district agrees to maintain them as being the most intense user of them. Steven has in his budget annually somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000 every year spent to replayer those cracks that are in those courts. We will have an inspection once Mother Nature starts to operate of those courts, but we anticipate that that inspection of those tennis courts could result in having them classified as what is sadly becoming a common term for you folks to hear, a known hazard. And what that means is, is that there's a potential risk for our students' safety and the safety of other visitors who come to play or compete on them. And it, because we would not be able to repair them in time when the boys' tennis team starts this spring, the Finance Committee asked Athletic and Activities Director Brian Hamel and I to begin negotiating a short-term solution with Premier Tennis and Fitness Center. And so we met with them on Thursday of last week, and primarily what that would be looking to do is we have had a relationship with them in years past where we've spent up to about $1,500 to $2,000 a year when inclement weather presented itself, which in Wisconsin does for spring sports. But at the same time, if for some reason that those tennis courts give the designation of a known hazard, we would like to expand the nature of that relationship and do what's known as a right-to-use agreement, whereby we would be able to use Premier Tennis and Fitness Center for the spring season of Red Hawk Boys Tennis, and that would be our primary facility so that we would not, that we would have a facility where those kids could be able to practice and play all season long. We did have a conversation with Go Right Way in our exploration of this, and we're fortunate enough in that the bus route that actually heads out that way for our Janesville students has some, what we would call ridership capacity on it, that we could put the estimated 25 to 30 students who are currently signed up to play boys' tennis, we could put them on the bus that goes out that way and they could drop them off. So the only transportation we'd be paying for is transportation back from Premier Tennis and Fitness Center. That'd be an estimated $1,500 for the season to do that. And then the dollar amount that they gave us for the exclusive use of those courts on Monday, Wednesday, Friday after school, and then Tuesday, Thursday before school, was estimated to be approximately $7,500. And so I come to you tonight asking for the right to continue to negotiate and solidify the terms of that agreement, and then present it back to the board for their consideration and possible approval at the first April meeting. In the short term, given that the students will start practice on spring break, our existing arrangement is $15 an hour for, or $15 per court, and so if we're not able to practice between now and the time that this body would meet, we would just keep operating under the same operating guidelines that we have in years past, and given the fact that we're looking at a more exclusive nature of an agreement with them, we would rather have that presented to the full board for consideration and possible approval.
All right. Does any board members have any questions on this?
So we don't need approval tonight, then you're saying?
Correct. Just making sure you're comfortable with our direction, more so with consensus is fine, unless...
We did put a...
Yeah, for possible action, so.
I think it'd be good for, for the board to approve us to go and authorize the negotiation. Again, the final contract or the final commitment will not be done until the board approves that, but what we're asking for is direction to, and authorization to go ahead and negotiate a deal with Premier Tennis Fitness.
On that note, on that note, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to negotiate a right-to-use agreement with Premier Tennis and Fitness Center for the 2019 Boys' Tennis season that shall be brought back to the board for full board approval at their next meeting on April 8th, 2019.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Karen, a second by Mike, to authorize the staff to negotiate an agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Hey, Don, just one more comment. You know, we're looking at three different possibilities for, Jerry can help me out here, but with the new tennis courts out there, by quick trip, redoing ours, or a long-term here, but this is just trying to get us through this spring is...
Correct. Yes. Finance Committee Chair, this is absolutely correct. It was the consensus of the Finance Committee at their March 5 meeting to continue to explore all three options for long-term solutions, but with the most pressing need, the boys' tennis team starting a season in two weeks, to have established both a short-term plan and a long-term plan, and we'll continue to have conversations with both Steven and his crew, as well as the other two entities for potential long-term solutions for our tennis court needs.
Nice.
Yeah. Now, Diamond, question?
You referenced it, like in the past, it was $15 a day, and if I recall from our finance meeting, that that's the case, but it's based on availability. So this would secure our, our usage, and that, that's where more of the expense comes from, because they're taking those courts away from any other opportunities to make money.
That is correct.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Next on the agenda is new business, and we get to hear from Mr. Hamel and Mr. Bill Hurn again. It's always nice when we can hear them more than once in a board meeting. Mr. Hamel?
Okay, I'm bringing to you again this week another co-op, a girls' hockey co-op. The girls' hockey team is hosted by Beloit Memorial. You see in the copy that I've said, given you the sheet from Beloit Memorial that needs two signatures for approval. There are 12 schools in this co-op, truly a co-op. Milton had two students skating with Beloit this year. A few years ago, when the Rock County Fury Hockey Team stayed, we had eight girls on that team, which is really the only reason they went to state, I would say so myself. Just a little, a quick, you know, you don't want to hear too much about girls' hockey, I'm sure, but the Rock County Fury were conference and regional champions this year, and conference and regional champions last year, and regional champions the year before that, and regional sectional and state qualifier the year before that. So they've been pretty successful, and a lot of that success truly has been because of the Milton students. And the reason we did get into this co-op is we had a lot of girls, like I said at one point, especially, who played hockey, and they were going to play hockey in high school. And by getting into co-op, they could continue to be Milton school students, play hockey. We don't lose them moving to Janesville or some other, one of the many other schools that have the co-op. So it's been a real success the last few years, keep these kids here, and they were able to play hockey. So I just ask for your approval, continuing with the Rock County Fury, which is hosted by Beloit Memorial.
And one question for you. Where's Orangeville?
Orangeville, Illinois. Right down there by Lena.
That's the next question. Where's Lena? That's out in the road.
Apparently, where's the Wimswold?
Not in your history.
Down there by Stone.
So this is truly a large co-op then, isn't it?
This co-op, you know, some, some of them probably have a girl that plays hockey, and more than likely, many of these kids are either in the Janesville, probably the Janesville youth hockey, they just drive... hockey, they just drive that far to get into it, or possibly Monroe has a rank as well. So they may play together there, so that they just, they're all staying together to play high school hockey.
Well, to me, it's a good opportunity for our girls, whether we have, to meet girls from other schools and expand their friendships with other schools, too.
It's good networking for all these schools, for EDs as well.
So do I have a motion from anyone?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Tom, and a second from Diamond, to extend the co-op agreement with Beloit Memorial. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Mr. Bill Hearn?
All right, tonight, I have for you the Early College Credit Program and Start College Now request. Again, for those who remember this in years past, this is the Youth Options request. But starting this school year, the state changed the program. Again, Early College Credit Program refers to those school students who take college credit to the University of Wisconsin system, whether, most often, it's UW Whitewater, UW Online, or University of Wisconsin in Rock County, which is part of UW Whitewater now. And the Start College Now program, which is the Wisconsin Technical College program. So I'm bringing for you tonight the student request. This would be for first semester of next year. One note, when you take a look at this, it looks a little bit different than the past. We do have the largest number of students who are taking advantage of it that we've ever had. But also, within the Start College Now, the Wisconsin Technical School of Blackhawk Tech changed it all to one-credit modules, or one-and-a-half-credit modules. So it looks a lot larger there because it's altered the need. One note that I will make there for those students who are taking the CNA classes, usually, all of those students, while they still are taking CNA, they would have taken medical terminology. We cut in half the number of credit options by actually are able to offer medical terminology next year. We're also looking at exploring, there's a large number of students that are taking the construction trades class. We are looking at articulating that as well, working through those agreements. Of note, while there's a large number of credit requests here, not all students end up taking those credits. And also, new with 2018-19, the Early College Credit Program, is that we do receive 25% reimbursement from the state of those credits that are obtained, which is new for Youth Options, and I'm looking for L-Rail right now. I would have loved to have shared that with you.
Anybody have any questions? I'm just looking at some of the options. You know, I could teach a couple of those.
They're always looking down.
I have to contact Whitewater. So do I have a motion by the board to approve these options?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Tom, and a second by Karen, to approve these options. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bill Hearn.
Thank you.
And then we have action on the 2018-2019 open enrollment alternate applications.
They are slowing down a little bit this time of year. You only have one transfer in and one transfer out. Just as a reminder, the application period for 1920 is going on now. It's from the beginning of February through the end of April, and then you'll have those in your packet at the end of May.
Okay, thank you. Kim, do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
All right, so all those, all right, do we have a, Diamond makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Diamond, a second from Tom, to accept the open enrollment alternate applications. Let's have a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, motion carries, six to one. All right, we move on to miscellaneous, and action on staffing report, professional and support staff hires, resignations, and retirements.
I make a motion, we accept the staffing report. That includes one retirement notice?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Tom, and a second by Joe, to accept the staffing report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Action on gift and donations.
I accept donations with gratitude.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mike, and a second from Diamond, to accept the donations. I think they totaled about $9,900, $9,700?
Yes.
Or $9,500. And as I echo what Mike said, we accept these with gratitude. So let me say, did I vote? Okay, all those in favor of accepting it, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next meeting dates.
All right, tomorrow, we have a community engagement team from 9:00 to 10:00 D.O. March 12th, we have our Transportation Community Meeting at 10:00 District Office. March 14th is our HR Committee Meeting, 1:00 at District Office. March 20th is our referendum open house at the middle school from 6:00 to 7:00. And then our next, we have the election day, April 2nd, a Tuesday. And then April 8th is our next school board meeting at 6:30 here in high school.
So, Tim, did you say?
Spring break will be in between there, too.
March 20th is the open house at the middle school?
To the middle school.
All right, thank you.
HR is the 14th then?
HR is the 14th at 1:00 p.m. And then spring break is the 25th of March through the 29th, with school resuming on April 1st.
All right, thank you. All right, next, then, we have the executive session. A motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85-1C and 19.85-1G to discuss and take action, if appropriate, regarding employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation, that of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and to confer, and to confer, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or likely to become involved. So do I have, in the discussion of regarding employee compensation investigation, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion, we go into executive session.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. We start down there with Mike.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, six to one. So we'll be going into executive session. Are we going to have it here? Are we going to have it into another room?
Okay.